Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the Committee of the whole having risen would like to report back the The first recommendation is that Bills 182-33COR and Bill Number 183-33COR be sent back to committee. And the second recommendation is that to place in the third reading the following bills, Bill Number 153-33, 154-33, 155-33, 156-33, 15 and 157-33.
With their base on the third reading file with no changes?
With no changes, yes.
Okay. On that motion, hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you very much, Senator.
Madam Speaker, if I may, if I can move Bill Number 26-33COR to the third reading file, and if I can speak on it, please.
And that's as introduced?
As introduced, I'm sorry.
You may proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill 26-33 is an act to add a new section 10315 to Chapter 10 Title 5 of the Guam Code annotated, and this is relative to the online and public disclosure of medical licenses issued by the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. I want to share with you that physician licensure information is a critical piece of information every patient, prospective patient, and the public in general should be easy to, should be able to access, Madam Speaker. And today, through Bill 26-33, we can make this important information even easier to access by requiring the Department of Public Health and Social Services Health Professional Licensing Office to put the information which they already have online. I know we've explored this particular service before, and with the newer technologies and the ease of updating information on government websites, posting the basic licensing information of our health care providers online should no longer be a service, it should be a standard section of the Department of Public Health and Social Services website. Now, Madam Speaker, I know that the Health Professional Licensing Office's testimony submitted, testimony that they submitted contains some questions regarding the funding of this undertaking, but I want to share with my colleagues, and I must state for the record that merely posting a PDF file online does not require or does not take much time or effort to do. I want to tell you that if you look at the website of Department of Public Health and Social Services, dphss.guam.gov, you see that it is a neatly organized and modern site that they have online right now containing the agency's latest press releases, an announcement for the open enrollment period for Medicare Part D. They have online, on their web, an announcement for the General Mills Cheerios and Honey Nut Cheerios Serial Recall, and they even have online the notice that the agency is intent to employ a Mr. Brian J. Quee, MS, as the medical director for the Northern and Southern Public Health Center, Community Health Senator, and they even show that it says at a salary of $134,000 per annum at Step 10. I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that with this latest news posted at the top of their website continuously, I have to commend Public Health for the website that they have, and I think that this information is important, and most importantly, it's up to date. So, and I also want to note that just below in the section of the agency, there is the agency's latest news where there is a section that is also titled on their web, it's called Important Documents. Now, this currently, in the section of downloads, it contains four downloadable PDF files, and I want to share with you that on that breakdown, it has a citizen-centric report and a few financial reports from a couple of years, from several years ago, and I just want you to know, as I was looking at that, I hope they will update that soon because there have been recent informations that we receive quarterly that has been updated. But I want to share with my colleagues that it is clear that Public Health has the website manpower and capability to make this really simple Bill 26-33 happen. I also want to make it clear that the bill doesn't require that Public Health go out and procure a webmaster and a new design with a whole new content management system. It only requires, Madam Speaker, that the Health Professional Licensing Office forward an updated list of health professional licenses issued for the quarter to the Department of Public Health and Social Services IT Division, or whomever it's uploaded to, where those nifty press releases are online for posting. And the best part of this, Madam Speaker, about this is the list can be provided by the Guam Board of Medical Examiners to the Health Professional Licensing Office as soon it is updated. It's easy, efficient, and above all, transparent, informative, and accessible to all. I also want to know that not too long ago, our good colleagues in this august body also talked about having all the information, and the good senator from Sinahania said that, you know, this is the way we need to go. True transparency, true accessibility, and making sure that as we look at the Patient Protection Act, and making sure that all the patients here on Guam have that opportunity to look at all those who have medical licenses be posted, and easy. Just, you know, nowadays, like my grandson said, "I'll do it, I'll do it, I'll do it." It's easy, just like this, Grandma, just press this light, this button on this, on my iPad, I know. And I say it like that, Madam Speakers, because if there is concerns about how this is going to be implemented, Public Health already has the templates in place, and you and I know that sharing information and getting data and researching and just getting things online is just at a touch of our, touch of a finger unto that piece of smart technology. So, I really do hope that my colleagues look at this bill and give me that favorable support as it will support all the patients looking for, to see what medical licenses are here on our island. So, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I know I spoke long about this one, I usually don't speak this long, but I'm just saying it is something that is easy, something that can be transparent, and something where everybody can have excessive accessibility to. So, thank you, and Cesar Smase.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion? Anybody would like to speak on 26-33?
Thank you. On the way.
I have a question, but I'm up here, so can I take a brief recess? Is there anybody else who would like to speak on Bill 26-33? There being none, on the motion then to send 26-33 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill Number 29-33, and I understand that this is the Vice Speaker, and you have a substituted version that was by the committee?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I ask that the legislature accept this substituted Bill 29-33 as substituted by the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement, and further amended by the Committee on Rules.
Actually, I guess it was already accepted by the committee in rules, so now to place.
All right, then.
Yes, and you would like to speak on it?
Please.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, earlier this year when I assumed chair oversight over the Attorney General's office, within the first month, I received a letter, and it's included in the committee report, from one of the attorneys at the Attorney General's office, asking that I address some legislation, which they had asked for in the previous legislature, for the legislature to approve a settlement that the Attorney General's office had negotiated with the estate of Jose M. Torres. And it didn't get through last legislature, and so early this year, he, the Assistant Attorney General, asked if I would consider introducing the legislation. They had legislation attached, and I introduced it. As you also know, earlier this year, a new Attorney General assumed responsibility of the office. When we had, when the good chairman had the hearing on this bill, she asked for some additional time to look at the bill, and with the chairman, with the committee and her staff, they rewrote the bill, and that's why it's substituted. But it still addresses what the settlement that had been negotiated between the Attorney General's office and the attorneys for the estate, and the other, it takes into account authorizing the transfer of the land to Guam Waterworks, and then Guam Waterworks to, I guess, Micrenishma. But it's a negotiated settlement, and they just want to finally close this case, which has been lingering for several years. The other amendment that was made was to make it clear that any monetary amount that is received, the government portion of the settlement proceeds shall be deposited in the land bank for the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. It's a fairly simple bill to try to finally bring to closure a settlement in the, in this litigation, and so I asked my colleagues for their support in getting this bill through. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motions, anyone like to speak on it? There being none, on the motion then to send 70, I'm sorry, 29-33 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill Number 76-33, Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized? Oh, Senator, I, okay, all right, I'll come back to you. I'm going to move on while we're waiting for copies that are being made in the next bill, but I don't see Senator Munia Barnes. I'm going to move over to Senator Tonyada on 134, I hope you're ready.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 13433 is an act to rezone lot. Move to the third reading, please.
I know we're in a hurry, we want to get this so done.
It was to rezone a lot that I want to move to the third reading.
Okay, and you may, you want to speak on it?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. It's an act to rezone a lot, 3257-4-2 in the municipality of Sinahania, from agricultural to commercial zone. And, Madam Speaker, if you recall back, back a couple of years ago, when public law 29731 was passed, and that allowed for the rezoning of the land in Sinahania, this parcel of property from agricultural to commercial. And today, that piece of property is the site of a new and much-needed dialysis center, and it's called The Village. And the author of that public law was our colleague, the former Speaker Ben, who saw the need for the legislature to take action, and that it would benefit our people for years to come. And because of the success of the dialysis, dialysis center, and the continued need for quality health care clinic, the owners acquired that small piece of property that is adjoining to it for the purpose of expanding the existing facility. And that property is zoned agricultural, and it would be need to, it needs to be rezoned for their expansion plans. Dr. Safa was here at the public hearing, and it was wonderful to see that he already had his architect and his people moving on it, because he really wants to ensure that the facilities are ready to go as soon as we're able to, should we get the support to pass this piece of legislation. And I hope that once we, we get this piece of legislation moved forward and passed, and it's signed into law, that Dr. Safa will be able to extend those facilities, and people will be able to access health care at wherever they stay. I mean, you know, we've done it in Manila, where currently now there's a nice new medical center up there, Sinahania is getting it. So, you know, making health care accessible to our people and making it closer to them, I believe, is always, always a good and positive thing to do for our island. And I hope I'll be able to get my colleagues' support on this measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So, on the motion to send 134, well, does anyone would like to speak on it? Anybody from Sinahania? Okay, except for me. None, so therefore, is there any objection to send 134-33 to the third reading file? No objections, so ordered. I'm going to go back now again to, are you ready, Senator Rodriguez? Not yet. Okay, then, Senator Munia Barnes is not here. Then I'm going to go back to Bill Number 91-33 LS, Senator Torres, and I understand you have a substitute. Okay, so, do you have copies for everybody of the substituted version?
Yes.
Yes, I want to confirm, because I don't have my copy. All right, can somebody please make sure that I have a copy? I don't. Thank you. Okay, Senator Torres, on Bill 91-33?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion, first of all, to accept Bill Number 91-33 LS as substituted by myself as the speaker, I mean, as the sponsor on the floor.
On the motion, no objection, and that's to accept, so ordered, and to place now.
Okay, I'd also like to play, make a motion, Madam Speaker, to place Bill Number 91-33 LS as substituted by myself as the sponsor in the third reading file.
And you want to speak?
And if I may have permission to discuss the bill briefly?
Yes, you may proceed.
Thank you. Bill Number 91-33 LS is an initiative by the Guam Chamber of Commerce, and Bill Number 91-33 LS essentially is an act to amend certain sections of Chapter 70 Title 11 GCA relative to the issuance of business licenses. There is a general sentiment in the business community that the renewal of business licenses as presently contained in the law is not business-friendly, and they, the request from many in the business community is that we amend the law such that we don't have one common anniversary date for renewal of business licenses. Essentially, business licenses are renewed every June, first of June annually, and, or every, every year, regardless of when you sign up for a business license. And what this bill does is it amends Section 2 of Chapter 70 Title 11 Guam Code annotated so that a person who obtains a business license on a certain month will have the renewal of his business license one year after the date of his application. And for those that have present business licenses, what this bill contemplates is that it will bring everybody back to a point where they can have their licenses renewed upon expiration of the date that's concurrent, concurrent with the date that they issued the licenses, or that they obtained the licenses in the first place. And so what we did is, is on Section 2, it changes it so that all licenses shall be issued on an annual basis, and regardless of when issued, shall expire one year after the date for which issued or renewed. What we also did in this bill, when there was public testimony at the public hearing, there were some concerns raised by the Department of Revenue and Taxation that it's going to be impractical to do, because they have a system in place, and they don't have the software right now that will allow for it to happen, and they don't have monies to spend on obtaining the software that will make it happen. There was some concern about their ability to collect the taxes that are due, because what this does, what presently, they track all the taxes before they renew at the one time. What I'd like to point out, though, is that regardless of whether you have one common date for renewing a license, or whether you have it throughout the year, it still doesn't affect the collection of taxes, because everybody is obligated to pay their taxes. And what we've done, though, to address the issue of the concern about whether, whether it's, you know, we can, we can graduate into this, what I've done with the bill also is I've provided that the Department of Revenue and Taxation will have up to 18 months to effectuate this, to bring everybody into this system. And to understand that, we just have to consider that, should this bill be passed into law, at present, everybody has renewed their licenses as of June 1. So, the next renewal cycle is June 1 of 2016. So, from, from the period that this bill gets passed into law, assuming it does, the Department of Revenue and Taxation will have that period to work the system out. And this bill also provides that, that they will work with, with the Office of Technology to sort out those things. So, we have the opportunity here to not only have the Department of Revenue and Taxation work the system over the course between when it's enacted until the next round of renewals, which will be June 2016. It also allows them to understand what their true needs are, working with the Office of Technology, and if there is a corresponding cost to implement this change in the, in the process, that that cost can then be worked into the fiscal year budget for the fiscal year 2017. So, the, what it boils down to is, we have a piece of legislation here that the business community believes is going to be a good thing for them. It'll alleviate long lines when everybody's rushing at one given time to renew their licenses. Some have the option of going online, and they can do that, but most, most right now go and line up, and they find that a huge inconvenience. So, this relieves that burden. And number two, with regard to legislation that is, that is a little difficult to implement, the way that this legislation works is it actually has a period where the department can ease into it. And it doesn't, if anything, what it does also, the upside to this, is that it allows for a steady stream of revenue into the government from the business license fees. And if anything, that, you know, that is a good thing, as opposed to everything coming in only at one time, this actually fans it over, and it makes it convenient not only for the business owners who want to renew their license, but it makes it convenient for the department who isn't reacting to a rush on the department by thousands of business holders who want to issue their license before the deadline. So, it has a corresponding good, I think, to the system. And we also have to consider that, you know, we're, we're looking at ways to improve our economy, we're looking at ways to entice businesses to come to Guam, or to start up, current residents to start up businesses on Guam. So, this just adds to the business climate. And again, I want to reiterate that it was an initiative by the Chamber of Commerce, and I asked my colleagues to please give it their thorough consideration. I've looked at all the, the concerns posed by the, both the Chamber who responded to the public hearing, and the Department of Revenue and Taxation who has to implement it, and I believe that this piece of legislation and all the amendments that I did in the substitute bill addresses all those concerns, and actually makes it work for both parties. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the motion, Mr. Vice Speaker?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do want to speak on the bill, but first I would ask if the sponsor would yield to a question on the implementation?
And your question?
And the question that I have is that, the way that it's current, the bill is written, that the licenses will be 12 months. So, it would seem to me that all current licenses that have an expiration date on June 1st will expire next year on June the 1st, that the only ones that will have new dates would or should only be those people who get new licenses between the date of enactment and next June. Because if the licenses is supposed to only run for 12 months, all of the 10,000 companies that currently exist on Guam have licenses that expire on June the 1st, that's 12 to 12. I mean, that's 12 months. The only ones that the quarter should have a October, November, or December, January date are those who apply for a new license between now and next June. And I'm wondering if, if my interpretation of the implementation is incorrect.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I yield to the question. To the retired Speaker and those in the body, I want to refer To the retired Speaker and those in the body, I want to refer you to Page 2, Line 1, where we inserted Subsection B. And the way that it's contemplated is, I understand that those present business license, current business licenses, all have an expiration date of June 1st. With Subsection B, on Page 2, Line 1, it reads, "All licenses and endorsements applicable thereto, which are already in existence prior to the enactment of this law, shall be renewed on the month consistent with the month they originally attained their license." The Department of Revenue and Taxation, I have up to 18 months from the enactment of the law to amend the renewal dates of these licenses and endorsements to conform with the renewal date outlined in Section 70115 of this chapter. The way that this was intended is that, come June 1, let's say my business was, I originally started up my business in September of whatever year prior to that. So come June 1, 2016, when I go to renew my license, my license will be good from July 1 through August 31 of the following year. So this is, this is the way it's going to be implemented, it's going to be prorated such that you, your license then is not for necessarily one month, and it's only initially to get everybody back to the date from which their licenses were applied for. Do you understand? So if, say, my date was September, I opened up my business in September 1, the record shows that I applied on September 1 of whatever year, 1995, whatever, on June 1, 2016, when I go to renew that license, the expiration date of my new license, my renewed license, then becomes effective July 1 with an expiration date of August 31. So it's just the day before, whatever, and that's how, and that's why I, when we put this amendment in, we gave up to 18 months, because it's contemplating that from point now, when the, when, should this become enacted into law, 18 months out, it will give the department that opportunity to bring everybody to this schematic, where they renew their licenses come June 1, they all get retrofitted into their proper months per the date that they opened up their, first got their licenses. I hope that that was a little clearer.
Mr. Vice Speaker?
I kind of got that idea when I went down to B, but I'm trying to figure out what kind of convenience you're providing. If, right now, it's inconvenient to go once, you're now saying you're going to have to go twice. You have to go June, before June the 1st to extend it from June the 1st to September the 30th, to August the 31st, so that your new license starts back up in September. So you go May 30th, and you go August 30th.
Not of the same year.
So what's going to happen is someone's going to pay, rather than the $10 fee, it's going to be 10 plus 1/12 of $10 for the license fee to get it to the?
And that's what, that's what the Chamber of Commerce recognizes and is willing to go through, that one inconvenience, in exchange for every year thereafter being inconvenienced with long lines and that sort of thing. It was contemplated that there has to be a way to bring it forward, there has to be a way to bring it forward, Madam Speaker, and initially, this is the way that it's done, and that's why you give them that period, anticipating that every month, you know, there are 12 months in the year, right? So everybody's renewal date will change when they go in to reapply for their licenses next year.
Mr. Vice Speaker?
I understand what she's saying, so, but I would like to comment on the bill at this point. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I mean, I understand, but I really do think that it's imperative that we, as a legislature, understand the concerns of the department, the six or five people that work in that division that renew the licenses. And as I understand it, it's not so much software, as much as just realizing that June 1st was chosen for a specific purpose. It was expected that everybody would have paid their taxes for the previous year by April the 15th. And so, therefore, on June the 1st, when you went in to pay, to get your business license, the fact that you filed your taxes for the year would show that you've been current in your taxes. And you would have a six-week-old filing to show that you're current, and that you accounted for all your income in your businesses, in your tax return. And so that was the reason why that date was chosen. It just wasn't some legislator, some legislator in the third Guam Legislature deciding June the 1st was his birthday, and he wanted everybody to go revenue tax. It was for a specific purpose, so that they would be able to look at the most recent filing of taxes to determine whether or not that applicant was current. The other concern, as I understand it, from the employees at Revenue and Taxation, is convenience, not so much for the, them at work there, but in order to be able to determine whether or not people have a current business license, those of you that have businesses know that you're supposed to post your business license in a conspicuous place, someplace at the entrance of your building, or in your, behind the cash register, someplace that's conspicuous. And as I understand it from the employees, it's that if you look at the licenses, the business licenses, every year, they change the color. Not because that's what we decided in Corde that was going to be the color for the day, they change the color because when a revenue agent goes out, he can just walk into the business, look behind the cash register, and say, "Wait a minute. That license is green. The last time we used green was in 2012. Where's your pink for 2015?" Otherwise, they're going to have to go and look, go behind the cash register, go up to the frame, look at the date, and say, "Oh, all the 2015s are pink, but I can't tell that date from standing at this point." So they have to go up. In much the same way that we have with our renewal of our tags on our cars. They're all color-coded, but they're color-coded for the year. But unless you have laser vision, which, you know, sometimes the police do, sometimes they don't, that you may have the right color, but it's really difficult to see what month that license was renewed. And it's not until you run a red light, or you're doing something, or they're after you for some reason, that they're going to stop and look carefully to say, "Your tag should have been renewed in August, it's now October year, and we're going to pull you in for, you know, give you a ticket for a late tag." And so it's, it's convenience for the inspectors to be able to go out and be able to immediately walk into a business establishment and know from the color of the tag that they're good until June 2016. They're good until June of the following year. Otherwise, they're going to have to go up and ask permission to go behind every cash register and ask, "Is that a June or July date on that, or is that, you know, what month was that?" And as I understand it, from the, from the employees at Revenue and Taxation, they also wanted me to convey to the members of the legislature that, yes, all licenses are supposed to be renewed on June the 1st, but that does not, and they wanted me to stress this, that does not preclude you from going in on May the 2nd, 3rd, 6th, 10th, 12th, 15th, any time, any time before June the 1st. As long as you can come in and show that you paid your taxes on July the, I mean, on April the 15th, and you bring your tax form and show that you're current in all your taxes. So everybody doesn't need to go there on the 1st of June. They can go in there any time that they want to, after they file their taxes in February. Just get the right color for the right part, and wait until June the 1st to put up your purple one for 2016. I'm, I'm not saying I'm opposed to the bill, I'm just, I was asked to advocate the position of the employees up there, so that we, as a legislature, understand why a seemingly archaic practice continues. And if we're even having problems with people not filing their taxes for 20 years and getting renewed contracts in the government, we think that now they're going to be able to be able to walk in and tell who moved their date from June to September, and who moved their date from June to August, and what date should this be on this? It may be, it's just going to be really a mess. And I just want to convey that. That was the message that I was asked to convey, and hopefully that you'll understand that their concern is not so much software, because typing in those dates is not, is not the major issue. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else would like to speak? Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to commend the author of this bill for being really forward-thinking and responding to the needs that had been articulated by the business community. And I clearly hear what the good previous speaker had noted about the limitations that we currently are facing relative to even collecting taxes and the renewal of businesses. At the same time, I do want to acknowledge that, you know, Revenue and Tax lately have actually moved forward to allowing businesses to renew their licenses online, so that you can now renew licenses as early as May, and you can do it online, provided that you are up-to-date with your income tax, you don't have, you have filed your gross receipts tax, and so on, so that there aren't any conditions for the renewal. And, you know, I do support the concept of this bill, I really do. And I also hear the concerns of the employees, because we wouldn't want to move anything forward that's going to end up failing or not being implemented correctly, because it doesn't have the kind of support. So I would like to, to ask the author of the bill just a question regarding, first of all, the financial support and the training that would be needed, as to whether that had been considered and that should be included as part of a precondition to the full implementation of the Act or the mandate. And if I could just...
Senator, do you yield to the question?
With regard to, with regard to the concern about support and training and all of that, under Section 5, Page 3, Line 19, there is a line there that we inserted that reads that "The Department of Revenue and Taxation shall work with the Office of Technology in implementing the objectives of this chapter." I also want to point out that when you, in considering all the things that are being mentioned here, we have concerns about whether we can determine if they're current with taxes, and, you know, and this is a good reason to have it all in one, well, you know, at any given time, we can determine whether we're current in taxes when we go for clearances, when we request clearances. It's looking at a system, and one would expect that if it's staggered, these thousands of people are staggered over 12 months, that it's actually a lot easier than thousands coming in, you know, over a condensed period of either up to two months online, or up to one month presently.
I think that she, you probably answered her question already, she indicated. Okay, Senator Underwood?
So, so basically, okay, in that line, we're depending on the Office of Technology to come up with the software and the training. I'm just concerned that, one of the concerns that had been articulated by Revenue and Tax is that they currently really don't have the manpower to do this, to have this done. And so they're not seeing how this can be implemented. And so if we're going to require a far, a new software that's far more complex, that is going to also capture who has not renewed, who has not paid their taxes, if we're going to require a software that, that will have multiple functions, I would think that we should at least have some kind of fiscal impact regarding this. I just want to be clear, I want this to work. I would want our business community to be accommodated, for after all, the government exists, we exist to provide support for our community. But I'm, as it is written right now, I'm concerned that, upon the enactment, which seems to be in a month, that's my interpretation, that we're not going to provide the kind of support for the division or the department that would be required to carry this out, and carrying this out is not as simple as just learning the software. There's just a lot of things that could go wrong, even with the software and the programming of the software. Not to mention how much it might cost to purchase that software, and how much time the employees will need. So this is a big undertaking that I believe should be undertaken. And as I had noted, the author, to me, you know, is forward-thinking in doing this. I'm just concerned that it's far more complex, and I would, I would really recommend that I don't, I don't have a suggested amendment that would be inserted here right now, but I really would recommend that we, we provide the kind of support that is needed to implement this by either having a commission or a group together that will work this out, make the recommendations, make sure that we have all the materials, the training, and the people, and that we, and they would make the recommendations for when this would actually be implemented, so it would be successful. It would be successful. So, Madam Speaker, I, I don't know if I would be able to, I want to be able to work out on a proposed amendment that would be inserted here, but I don't have that ready right now, so I don't know if you can go to another speaker, and then I can come back?
I don't have anybody else after you have indicated. Okay, now I do have two. Okay. So. So what is, all of a sudden, from no one to two? Okay, Senator, I will come back to you. If there's no objections from anyone, I will, I do have Senator Blas and then Senator Rodriguez. So Senator, you would have an opportunity to... So Senator, you can, you would have an opportunity to, and I'll come back to you. Senator Blas?
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senators, please, and we do, senators, we do have somebody who is going to speak. Yes, we do.
That's all I have to say about that.
Senator Blas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Speaker. I, I do have a proposed amendment, uh, just for a point of clarity. It's actually found on Page Two, um, Line Four, actually Line Fifteen. Uh, it starts at Line Fourteen, or I'll start with Line Thirteen. It says, "Charged on an annual basis, comma, commencing on the date of issuance or renewal and ending on the day before that date of issuance in the following year." Um, I think that it's best for clarity that it says, "Ending on the day before the month of day, a month and day of issuance of, in the following year." Because the date of issuance in the following year, date of issuance is the date you...
Before...
The month and day.
So what, which are the words you're trying to delete?
So I wanted the, the, before that date of issu-, okay, that date?
So to delete before that date? And replace with?
Before the month and day of issuance in the following year.
Before the month and...
Day.
Day of issuance. So you want to remove that date?
No, yeah, because date basically says it's month, day and year.
So on Line Fifteen, your new amendment would be before the month and day of issuance in the following year. Is that your... Okay, and that means to delete the two, that, two words, that and date, that date. Senators, do you understand the amendment? Senator, you can proceed to explain then.
And the reason why, Madam Speaker, is because when you use the date, the date basically comprises of month, day and year. So when you say the, the date of issuance in the following year, um, while you basically can understand what, what you're trying to get at, the month and date of the following year or the, that date, which could be October twenty-first, or October twenty-second of 2015, the date is October twenty-second, twenty-second of 2015 if you read the way it's... So if you say the month and day, then all you're saying is October twenty-second as opposed to October twenty-second, nine, 2015.
Okay, Senators, on the amendment, on Page Two, Line Fifteen, where it says before, delete the words "that date" and replace it with the month and day. So it should read before the month and day of issuance in the following year. On the amendment? No objections? So order. You still have the floor, Senator?
I was, I was hoping that Senator, good Senator from Eastern...
Okay, then we have Senator Rodriguez who wants to speak too. So, I know you're buying time for the Senator. Okay, Senator Rodriguez, you're, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise to, in support of this legislation, Bill Ninety-One. You know, it was several years ago that Senator Tina Munya Barnes, I know she's not he, um, she stepped out for a minute, um, she had actually envisioned this type of, um, of initiative. Um, you know, this was even as, as a staffer on, on, in her office that I know that she was working with the Department of Revenue and Taxation to see how this can happen. And, um, I, I applaud the sponsor of this legislation today because it's come this far. Um, and I, I understand the, the concerns that were raised by the Vice Speaker and also Senator Underwood, um, but, you know, I, I just want to, you know, I just want to caution, I don't know if we're, we're, we're overthinking this, um, the process. I know that, um, right now they do have certain licenses that they renew on a, on a, on an annual basis. Um, and sure, those licenses, driver's license and I believe vehicle registrations don't require any tax clearances. However, there is already a, a mechanism. They know, you know, I mean, it's already happening, the, the renewal of, of certain licenses on an annual basis. And so I am, um, I'm hoping that we can really find some, some, some way to, to move this forward. And I, I have, um, I have faith and trust that the employees of the department, once this is, um, if and when this legislation moves forward and passes, will come up with the, the protocols and, and, not, the protocols and the procedures on how to move forward, whether, I know now they're using a color coding on the different years that licenses are, are issued. And I'm sure they can develop something, you know, either, um, you know, in, um, increasing the size of expiration or the year it is, it needs to be renewed, just to give that sense of transparency so that the, um, the patrons of any business or if a revenue agent does come in, that it's easily verifiable. So, I'm hoping that whoever has an amendment is, is going to be ready because I, I hope, I'm, I'm really hoping that we can move this forward because this is forward-thinking. This is a measure that would, um, would be beneficial to the business community, but also as we saw in the testimony of the Director, um, to their employees as well. So, um, I, I stand in support of this measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Nicholas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm the Chair of the Committee of Oversight of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Um, when this measure first came to my attention, uh, and, and even to this very day, I think that it's something that we can definitely consider moving forward. I do have one major concern that is more of a timeliness issue, Madam Speaker, and that is that right now the Department of Revenue and Taxation is undergoing, um, multiple investigations. We have an investigation that just recently concluded in the ABC Division. We have one that's resulting in, um, additional charges in the Driver's License Division. And I'm getting word that there were actually terminations in another division for other issues as well. And, um, I, I think that we can definitely move this matter forward. My, my biggest concern however is whether or not the agency is in a position to begin implementing change when right now I think it needs to reconsolidate, um, management needs to focus on, um, really, really cracking down on, on the systems that are in place now. Um, one of my concerns is that in a, in a highly volatile environment where we have a lot of ongoing investigations, changing the system may create other openings for, um, uh, bad practices to kind of get, um, pushed off to the side or, or covered up. Uh, so I'm, I'm just very concerned as to the timeliness of moving this measure forward now. Uh, I would probably prefer that we consider doing this, um, after we've settled, uh, a lot of the ongoing investigations. I even transmitted a letter to the Governor saying, you know, Mr. Governor, based on some oversight hearings I've had in the past, there's another, there are other divisions that you may want to appoint a third-party investigator via, via the Attorney General to actually go in and look at some of the tax collection, collection issues. And that would tie in directly with the business license renewals because if businesses were getting their license renewed when they weren't paying their taxes, that's something that really needs to get, uh, addressed. You know, how are some businesses able to do that while others weren't? How are some businesses able to continue operating with renewed licenses when they weren't paying their taxes? That's, I think, another shoe that can probably drop over there in that, in that agency. And I know that there's other, there may be another bill on our session with respect to, um, kind of touching the Department of Revenue and Taxation. At this juncture, I'm very uncomfortable with us making any kind of changes until we've cleared the air and we've gotten through this period of crackdown, which I very much support. We cannot have any, any doubt in any of our government services, but most particularly in the one that's responsible for all the regulation and all the taxes and the reissuing of the business licenses. So, um, with that in mind, uh, I would like to, for us to consider moving this measure forward, but perhaps at a later time. So I'd like to make a motion that we, um, we refer Bill Ninety-One dash three-three back to committee. And I will work with the sponsor in good faith to move this matter forward as soon as we've cleared the air up at the agency. But as, as, as of this time, as the Chair of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, I'm just very concerned about potentially implementing change when management might not have the time to do it because they're focusing on the problems right now. Um, and when that potential change may disrupt any future ongoing, future ongoing investigations in the agency that really need to be, um, fully vetted before we begin working on the improvements, Madam Speaker. That, that, I, I would like to make that motion.
The sponsor objects and then that is, you know, a motion is really not debatable. So, all in favor then of sending the Bill Ninety-One dash thirty-three back to the committee? Please raise your hand. The motion, Phelps. Uh, Senator Underwood, are you ready with your amendment? Okay, so... Is it long?
No, no, it's active.
Because otherwise we have to have copies made.
If you go to Section Five, it's active eight. If you go to Line Nineteen, the issue there is, um, the revenue, um, the Department of Revenue and Taxation shall work with the Office of Technology in implementing that this, of this chapter. I just wanted to link the amendment that the Department of Revenue and Taxation shall work with the Office of Technology in providing adequate training for the implementation of the objectives of this chapter. And then if we go to the first sentence, um, I would make that first.
Sorry. So I would make that the first sentence? So the first sentence, the Department of Revenue and Taxation shall work with the Office of Technology in providing adequate training on the objectives?
For the implement, for the, for implementing the objectives of this chapter?
For implementing...
The objectives of this chapter?
Of this chapter, okay.
That would be, I'm, I'm, um, suggesting, I'm suggesting that would be the first sentence. Then these changes to the terms of business licenses shall be effective, given, given the concerns that had been noted about the readiness of revenue and tax to implement this, I would like to proffer this amendment that these changes to the term of business licenses shall be effective on this...
Point of, point of order, Madam Speaker, we have amendment that was proposed in front of us that we haven't disposed of just yet. Is, wasn't that an amendment that she made to the initial?
No, she's not, she's not yet done. She was just, she just read the first sentence.
You want me to do the, I'm reordering the...
Okay, so... She's going through now. The first, the first amendment is a sentence in Section Five.
Correct.
You're right. And that is providing adequate training for the, for implementing the objectives of this chapter.
Correct. And that is the amendment that we are supposed to be addressing at this time unless there is an extra wording to go along with the amendment, to the, to the amendment that she's just inserting now. I'm not sure how it can move on.
That's what I'm, I'm, that's, she is continuing the sentence.
Okay. I'm sorry.
But she's, she's, but she's doing it one at a time only because we don't have it xeroxed for everybody.
Do you want me to xeroxed?
And eventually we'll get a copy. So we'll just get a recess then and get a, a copy for everybody.
All right. All right.
Legislature's back in session. Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr.
Speaker. Has everybody received the amendment? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On page three, line 18 of the bill would read, "Section five, effective date. The Department of Revenue and Taxation shall work with the Office of Technology in providing adequate training for implementing the objectives of this chapter. These changes to the terms, term of business licenses shall be made effective on the second day of October 2016." And the reason why, yes?
I didn't ask any questions.
Okay. So, the reason why I had moved it to October 2016 is, again, to provide Revenue and Tax the opportunity to be prepared to implement this, get the training, and identify the necessary resources, and actually really make sure that this can work. So, by giving them a year to do this, I'm hoping that all of those questions that had been raised and the concerns that had been raised by the previous speakers would be addressed. But then, again, I want to reiterate, Mr. Speaker, that the intent of this bill is really very good, and it will provide support for the businesses, and I'm asking your support, my colleagues' support, in supporting this amendment that I'm proffering. Thank you.
On the Underwood amendment, any senator wish to be heard? On the Underwood amendment, Senator Janice Pardon.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I guess it comes, if I may ask a question, not so much of the profferer of this amendment, but really to the author of the bill itself. And it's concerning this amendment, so if I may, if you'd just give me a little latitude on that part. And the question would be that in her original bill, in the bill that she puts before us, it says, "The Department of Revenue and Taxation shall work with the Office of Technology in implementing the objectives of this chapter." In the amendment, it's changed to provide, to work with the Office of Technology in providing adequate training. And so, it's more of a limited scope than it is a broader scope. And I guess the question I have to the author is if that's what she intended when she put her version in her bill. In other words, it was a more general scope, that the Office of Technology perhaps would not only just work with training, but might also work with the systems and whatnot. Whereas, this amendment now comes down to a very narrow assistance to Rev and Tax in terms of just training. So, if I could ask the author of the bill is if that was her intention, to keep it as broad as possible so that Rev and Tax could avail themselves of whatever expertise the Office of Technology might be able to provide.
Do you yield, Senator?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. To the retiring speaker, that is exactly the intention I had intended by including the words, "Working with them and implementing the objectives," as being all encompassing, and to provide whatever need was necessary. So, yes, you are correct in your assessment.
Then, in that case, perhaps if, I would then have to ask the profferer of the amendment why she would just narrowly focus in on just providing the training as opposed to other assistance that the Office of Technology might be able to provide.
Do you yield, Senator Underwood? Please.
Mr. Speaker, I do appreciate the good speaker's attention to this, and I do agree. This does narrow the scope of support that would be provided by the Office of Technology. And so, I guess I would withdraw my amendment relative to just the training, because if we left it, "The Department of Revenue and Taxation shall work with the Office of Technology in implementing the objectives," that leaves it, that includes the software, the training, and so on. So, I withdraw my amendment relative to providing adequate training, because that would be incorporated in that initial statement that had been made there.
So, purposes, the clerk. The only amendment is going to be our second date of October 2016.
Yes. But I did rearrange the sentence so that that sentence, "The Department of Revenue and Taxation shall work with the Office of Technology in implementing the objectives of this chapter," that would be the first sentence. And then, these changes to the term of business licenses shall be made effective on the second day of October 2016.
So, what are you withdrawing?
So, I'm withdrawing that First Amendment where I had noted in providing adequate training for...
All three lines?
No.
Only the double underline.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Are you satisfied, Senator?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any objection to Senator Underwood withdrawing her double underlined amendment and leaving it the original? No objection?
No objection.
On the changing of the date to... On the changing of the date, anybody wish to speak? The day after the beginning of the fiscal year. Any objection to the date? None? Thank you. Anything further, Senator Underwood?
No. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Speaker Wampat.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, as I listen intently to the discussion, and that's one of the great things, is that when our colleagues start to come up one by one and, you know, start to analyze, of course, and ask questions, and present, you know, examples of how this will work, and how would it then become business-friendly. And the author, of course, have indicated that this was a request of the Chamber of Commerce. And I know in the Chamber of Commerce, there are different business sectors who are part of the Chamber. The question, though, that I have in my mind, that I like our colleagues to think about in particular, is that when, I mean, the bill basically says that on the original date in which an individual, an applicant has gone in to get a license, and it could go as far back as 30 years, 40 years, and the problem that I see with that, and normally government will keep records, of course, for maybe, what, 10 years, and then the rest will be filed in boxes elsewhere. What they would do is that, I don't know if they have the capability now to go all the way back, 30, 40 years, to find out what the original date was of the application. But even greater than that, and I'm thinking primarily of property managers, these are any one of the real estate companies who manage properties for individuals or business people, I suppose, is that there are multiple licenses. And I've seen individuals go to Rev and Tax to renew it, and we wonder, why is it taking so long? It's because they have stacks of licenses to renew. And fortunately, now, we're able to do this online. But then, those who also then have multiple licenses to renew, you could very well see any one of these property managers not just there now for any one specific date, but rather could very well find themselves at Rev and Tax every month, you know, to be able to renew all the licenses that could, if they checked back to the first original date in which they applied, that they're all going to be very different. And to me, then, that's definitely, at least for property managers, that that's not going to be a business-friendly operation for them. I think it's going to be a nightmare for them, having to go back and go at the different months in which they were first applied, and because of various properties that they're managing, to me, it would just be a nightmare. And I don't know if there is an answer to this question in terms of how then will Rev and Tax be able to do this? How then are we making this easier and friendly for property managers? I can think only of those, primarily as having so many to take care of in renewing licenses. You know, some companies, I know that they would have different names of their businesses, but I don't know whether they would have 10, 12, 15, 20, 30 of those. The only ones I can think of are property managers. And, I mean, please excuse me for my ignorance in terms of how many other businesses that would have so many branches from a mother company, a primary company, that I don't know. I'm not knowledgeable in terms of those kinds of businesses on island. But the only ones that I'm familiar with are property managers, because I, you know, I'm putting myself in their shoe as well, because there are, I mean, I am a small businesswoman. And I could very well, maybe not every month, but surely a couple of months. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard? I'll just take a short recess so I can return the speakership to the speaker.
I don't have anyone on the list. Is there anybody else who is interested in speaking? There being none, so the primary author, if you have an opportunity to close.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my colleagues for some very constructive and thorough dialogue on this bill. Anytime there are changes to processes, you know, clearly, we think about what the ramifications are. And there are always pluses and there are always minuses. But I think when we look at what the pluses are and what the potential good of a piece of legislation like this is, is it's consistent with what we're doing moving forward in government. We're moving forward with efficiencies. We're moving forward with making things more amenable and easy for our constituencies to use. We're also taking advantage of technological improvements, and we're essentially just promoting a good environment. Now, given that there are a lot of present problems and restrictions, maybe with the department, shouldn't preclude us from planning to move forward. And I want to thank one of my colleagues for moving back the date. If there are concerns with us being able to do something right now, maybe a little bit of time is good. If we need to understand what the, if and any there are some financial implications of this, then we can address that at the next budget cycle. So, that was a very good thing to give us a little bit of time, give all of us a little bit of time. But I think what this does, in my estimate, what this does is it really gives us an avenue to improve. It allows us to have a continuing stream of revenue that throughout the year. It staggers the renewal of business licenses so that, you know, everybody has a sense of room, and there isn't this mad rush to do anything. And then, it also will train perhaps the department to be more cognizant and able to extract business license and tax, whether people are truly conforming to the tax laws and whether they are remitting their taxes timely. So, it gives us, because it's staggered now, it gives everybody a little more breathing room. And to the idea that, you know, it can be an inconvenience if you're a multiple license holder, well, when we manage things nowadays, technology provides us, many of us, the ability to multitask. And I don't see that this necessarily is a physical impediment, because we can input it in our calendar systems, electronic calendar systems, and when the calendar systems prompt us, we can very conveniently go online and renew. So, I see many good things coming from this, but mostly, it demonstrates where this government is focused, and it's focused on forward movement. It's focused on having the ability to do things instantaneously, easily, and at our convenience and leisure. And part of the convenience is having staggered terms as opposed to being forced into one renewal date only. But I want to just, I want to thank my colleagues for bringing out some very healthy discussion, and I also want to just confirm my commitment to facilitating the business community that does move and support our existence and our economy on this island. So, with that, in closing, I'd just like to ask my colleagues if you have any further I would be happy to discuss this if need be, but please keep an open mind, because at one point, I remember doing business at Rev and Tax that revolved carbon copies, and that was the way that we made multiple copies of things. I mean, things have transpired in our short lifetimes, and it can only move forward in a more convenient way. And so, I ask for your support. a more convenient way, and so I ask for your support. Sidus Marci.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the motion to send 91-33 to third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Tomada, are you ready for Bill 137-33?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 137-33 as substituted by the author in third reading.
Okay, this is as substituted, yes. Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, Bill 137-33 seeks to correct really kind of an injustice that was committed long ago when the owner of a piece of private property agreed to exchange his property for another piece of government property on an area-for-area basis, and the exchange was made so that we could have access into what is now the Okudu High School. However, when the exchange was made, it was then realized that there was actually an easement, a military utility easement that goes right down the middle of that property that was given to him in exchange, and that property measures in area of approximately, approximately seven hundred and sixty-six square meters. And so what the bill proposes to do then is to give this private landowner, to compensate for this easement, which really is of no value to him, because he cannot build over it, an area that's equal to this utility easement on government property that is contiguous to the new property that he has. So that's what Bill 137-33 does, and he is currently, and actually has been, in communications with the Navy to try and get that military easement to be shifted down to the edge of the boundary, so that then he will have full use of the property and not be constrained by this utility easement that's currently going right down the middle of the property. That's basically his responsibility, and he has been getting favorable responses back from the Navy with regards to the shifting of the easement. And so really, Bill 137-33 is simple, it's just to compensate the individual for seven hundred and sixty-six square meters of property that is of no value to him, because it's a utility easement. And I would ask my colleagues to favorably consider the bill. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, does anybody like to speak on the motion? On Bill 137? Senator, are you looking for the bill so you can speak? Send it up? Okay, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would just like to stand up very briefly and extend my support for this particular legislation. I believe the family had ventured to reach out to most of the senators, if not all the senators in the hall, to be able to explain exactly what the predicament is, and the good chair of land has not only recognized it, but also is looking at the original intent of the legislation in terms of being able to compensate this family, and it just so happened that there's a federal easement that is going through his entire property, and this particular legislation would rectify it. So I certainly stand in support of this, Madam Speaker, and encourage our colleagues to do likewise. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Senator, do you want to close? Senator, I send it down. On the motion to send 137-33 to third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill number 144-33, Senator Frank Blas Jr., you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to place Bill number 144-33, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication, in the third reading, but I also like the opportunity to speak to it, please.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 144-33, and I want to give thanks again to the committee, as well as to the legal counsel for being able to assist in being able to come up with a product, and I'll be making several amendments to be able to clarify some positions in the bill, and to my co-sponsor of the legislation. What the bill provides is a mechanism and an understanding of, just basically, what our government receives on an annual basis in basically federal grants, federal receipts, the federal funding that we use to be able to operate our government. Now, I know that there are some, and the clearinghouse has basically stated, Senator, we do this already, and I recognize this. I recognize that there is a process already of being able to identify, and hopefully so, really, all the federal receipts that our government receives, but it's what we do with that information that this bill hopes to provide and hopes to do. You know, Madam Speaker, in the last budget process, you know, one of the things that I noticed is, you know, the amount of money that we spend on federal matching, the grants in aid, and the federal matching requirements that we have with different agencies, and the concern that I had here is, based on the amount of monies that we're funding that we receive from the federal government, just on that category alone, the issue and the concern that I had there is, first off, what truly are we spending, did we receive that funding for? What are we spending it on? But more importantly, how, the two things is, how does that fit into the operational requirements and the operational needs of that particular agency? And what happens to the operations of that agency should that federal funding expire or should it go away? And is there a mitigative effort? Is there a plan to be able to mitigate what may occur should that funding, should we lose that funding? Okay? And that's what this legislation intends to provide. It further intends to provide that, once that information is gathered, and, you know, part of that gathering information is for the agencies to actually come up with a plan, come up with a plan of what we're going to do should that funding expire or should that funding no longer exist, and that funding is necessary for the operations of that agency. What does that mean for us? Once that report is created and it's transmitted, then it becomes the information that not only the administration can share or can use in as far as the planning, but also for this body to recognize and to take action if necessary, to be able, again, to ensure that the operations of the government don't stop, or we can basically fend off or avoid, you know, what may occur if the funding was no longer in existence and that operations and that, and the operations no longer exist. So that's what it is, ma'am. And along those lines, what I want to do is, for the purposes of clarity, there's a couple amendments that I'd like to be able to make. And the first one, Madam Speaker, is found on page two, line 20, and where it says, "Reports the aggregate amount of federal funds appropriated by the legislature." First off, we don't appropriate federal funds, but what we do is we appropriate the monies for the federal matching grants and aid. So what I want to do is strike out the words "federal funds" and add the words "funds for federal matching grants and aid." So that way, it's appropriate, that's the money we appropriate, is the matching, is the monies that we have to match for the federal grants.
So the words are "funds for federal matching"?
Grants in aid.
Grant?
Grants in aid.
Grants in aid.
And that's the same nomenclature that we use in our budget.
Okay, so on page two, line 20, delete "federal funds" and add the words "funds for federal matching grants in aid."
Right.
And then everything else will continue. Any objections? Anybody like to speak on it? So ordered, no objections.
And then, Madam Speaker, the next amendments will be, actually, it's strikeouts. It's found on page three, basically beginning in line 12, and then also in line 15. Line 12, it says, "Strike out the words 'and political subdivision.'"
"And political subdivision." And then on line 15, the same.
And line 15, it says "or political subdivision." Strike that out.
"Or political subdivision." Does everybody understand that and following? So then, is there any objection to deletion on page three, line 12 and 13, "and political subdivision," the same language on line 15 with the word "or political subdivision"? No objections? So ordered. Still have the floor, Senator.
And then the last, actually, the last two is relative to where the reports are going to be going, and that will be found, again, on page three, starting on line 21, where it says, "To the Appropriations Committee, and after conferring with the, actually, the Chair of the Appropriations Committee, I think it's best that the report actually go to the Office of Finance and Budget." So strike out the words "Appropriations Committee" and put in "Office of Finance and Budget."
Okay, on page three, line 21, delete "Appropriations Committee" and add the words "Office of Finance and Budget." Any objection? No objections?
What's that?
So ordered.
No, and the other one is just to make sure that it's consistent, it's in line, okay? Line 24, where it says, "The Chair of the Appropriations Committee," to be consistent with the, is Office, strike out the Chair of the Appropriations Committee and submit and place "Office of Finance and Budget."
Okay, again, on page three, to be consistent, on line 24, delete "Appropriations Committee" and put "Office of Finance and Budget." Any objection?
No, 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 I said, take out the Chair.
Take out the Chair? Okay, take out the Chair.
Right.
Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
While I have no objection to taking out the Chair, I really do think that protocol requires that it go to the Speaker to be transmitted to the Office of Finance and Budget. I don't want to bypass the process by which we receive.
And I recognize that, Madam Speaker. If I could ask the legal counsel to go in and make that appropriate, okay?
Okay.
Ensure that appropriate language.
All right.
I do apologize. I know that the good Senator from PD wanted to see you get me in trouble.
Because normally, and you're right, and it's correct, because every time it comes to the Speaker's office and automatically.
I understand, Madam Speaker, I appreciate that. It was just his attempt to get me in trouble with you.
Yes, and so there's no objection then that the legal counsel will make the appropriate change then?
Yes, ma'am.
Based on legislative protocol.
So that's why, Madam Speaker.
So no objection to that motion, then, that our legal counsel then will take care of this.
Ma'am, when you were saying that, I was looking at legal counsel to making sure that.
Yes.
I want to remind her that I did save.
I did the exact same thing.
I saved her other 50 percent.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome.
Okay, with that, Madam Speaker, I, you know, I will listen attentively to any suggestions and any comments that members of this body would make with regards to this piece of legislation. I ask, though, for further support of our colleagues. I firmly believe this is something that's necessary to ensure that we recognize, first off, where our funding is coming in, how's it being used, but more importantly, what do we need to do should that funding source not be there or be drastically reduced. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. On the motion, then, on 144, I have Senator Nicholas and then Senator Tonyada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this piece of legislation. I think that it's a very prudent thing for us to do in our government. I've observed over the years, sometimes when federal funding would no longer be available for positions, and our default action in this body would just be to appropriate local funds to continue the federal program, and I would sit back and I would ask myself, if the federal government funded it and they felt that it was no longer necessary to fund in the interest of the nation, you know, are we really so compelled to fund it in the interest of the territory? So this will really give us an idea of, you know, not only where those programs are at that are federally funded, but if the money is no longer going to be there, exactly how are we going to continue that? I would be very interested if the auditor were to go in and kind of do a study as to how much local expenses today are a result of federal programs that were started, that were closed, that we carried on of local money. It'd be very interesting to know how much money we're spending on that, because then the question becomes, are federal grants really money coming in to help us that we should welcome with open arms all the time? Or are they sending us down a course through which we're constantly carrying a heavier and heavier load, whether or not it really is aligned with what's in the best interest of what we want to achieve as a local government? So that's, I think, something that we really need to be mindful of. I think this legislation will help us to get a better understanding of that, but I think that this should be also taken into the context where, in the future, as we talk about spending and we talk about appropriating, just because federal funds is running up for something, even if it's affecting positions, doesn't mean that we should just rush in with local money and fund it right away. I mean, I know that we don't like to affect positions, but maybe we need to be a bit more forthcoming with the people who are in those positions with respect to maybe the reporting coming out of this that says, hey, you know what, your position got funded, your position's going to continue to be funded for the next three years, but after that, you need to really begin figuring out what your future plans are going to be, because we cannot just all of a sudden turn on the local spigot to keep carrying over the federal program, when the whole intent of bringing in that federal program may have already been satisfied. That being said, Madam Speaker, I do have an amendment I would like to proffer on page three, line two, but before I do, I guess I just wanted to ask the mover of the legislation. When I read page three, section D, it reads, "Develops a plan for operating the designated state agency if there is a reduction in the federal receipt that the designated state agency, the designated agency receives." Now, these plans are supposed to be for the federal money, but the way I read it, it just reads a little too broad for me, because obviously, the plan for operating the agency if there's a reduction in federal receipts would be to increase the local appropriation, or just to continue operating the agency without really worrying about what the federal receipt's impact is going to be to the overall agency. I think more specifically, the question should be, what's the plan for operating the designated state agency federal program if there is a reduction in the federal receipt that the state agency receives? Because if it's a federal receipt, it's usually going to fund a federal program with any particular agency. So for example, if public health is receiving a grant for a certain project, if that grant goes away, if we use the current operating language, the question is, how is public health going to continue to operate? Well, the way it's always operated, with an appropriation from the Guam Legislature, but the question more specifically should be, if that particular grant goes away, how does those particular programs plan on continuing to operate? Or are we being very upfront and saying that they're going to sunset when there's no more federal funds? So I guess my question to the mover of the legislation is, are we, do you want to make it more specific to the direct federal program that's affected by the federal receipt, or did you still want to leave it open-ended for the agency? Because if it's open-ended for the agency, I don't think that we're going to get the answer that we're necessarily looking for.
I, yes, I do, Madam Speaker. And, you know, it's a great suggestion from, and a question from the good Senator, and he's right. You know, what we want to basically do is, specifically, how does this, you know, this federal funding that they receive for this program, should something happen, you're right, how does it affect that particular program? And if that program has an effect on the overall operations, how does that affect that? So it's more of a domino thing. Initially, first is, how would the agency run?
Initially, first is, how would that, how would the agency run if that program weren't to no longer exist? Okay? And, the question is, if it is in fact necessary, how do we intend? And I see his point, is, you're recognizing that it's very easy for an agency to say, "Well, then, I just need, you know, X amount of dollars from the local appropriations to be able to complete this." How, absent that, how do you intend to run this? Because he's absolutely right, Madam Speaker. I've found that a number of times. What we find is agencies that go out and, you know, they go to these conferences, you know, and they walk past this table and they says, "This is a great plan, here's a great program, we have the money for you, and money will be made available for you, and then it'll be graduated matching funds, you know, throughout the years, and then after 10 years, you own the whole thing." And then what happens is, then we're stuck with a program that we have to fund. And so, yeah, I agree, I agree with the good Senator. And I look forward and to make the proper amendments in this, so that it can clarify that. Thank you.
Senator, are you satisfied then with the?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Thank you, and thank you to the author. So I would like to proffer an amendment on page three, line two, after the word "agency", place a comma after the word "agency," and include the words, "and it's affected federal program or programs." So "program" with a parentheses S, comma, and that's it.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again, so that the clerks would write it?
After the word "agency," add the words, "and it's affected federal program or programs." So it'll be "program" with a parentheses S after the M, "and it's affected federal programs."
"And it's effective federal programs," with parentheses S. Then it continues on with that "if there is."
That's right.
Okay, on the amendment, does anyone like to speak on it? Okay, hearing no objections, so ordered. You still have the floor, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That pretty much concludes it. I'm very, I'm very interested in this bill. I think it'll be a very good thing, a very good operational tool for our government. And again, if the public auditor is listening, that would be something very interesting for them to take a look at. How many federal programs have we had come through our system that have, where the federal funding has gone away, but the local funding has absorbed 100% of it? And what really is the efficacy of these programs after the federal money has run out? Or did they just serve to kind of be an indirect way to continue to bloat government operations without it being really targeted towards what we want to achieve as a government? So with that, Madam Speaker, I really look forward to the passage of Bill 144. It has my full support. Thank you.
You're very welcome. On the motion, Senator Tonietta, you're recognized. Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the motion? Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly stand in support of the proposed measure, but if I can, perhaps this is something that may have skipped by me. On page two, on line one, if I can just recommend the legal counsel correct the grammar there, because it reads designated state agency means agency means any. So obviously, one of those, or two of those words should be deleted. So just so that it's grammatically correct. But I stand in support, Madam Speaker, certainly of this legislation. And let me just share a personal experience in regards to some of these programs that have been very, very effective and supportive of our island community. And the agreement and the understanding from the federal granting agency is that we will initially fund these programs or these positions, and then the local government would have to step in. Excellent example, we have four police officer ones today who are funded under the COPS program. It is a three-year funding mechanism, so that the local community can be able to recruit these additional personnel, and then transition them to local funding support. So that's one program that we know is very beneficial to our community in terms of bringing additional outside resources. Another one is the Adult Drug Code Program. When that was initiated, and one of our colleagues was at the judiciary of Guam, it was a three-year funding mechanism. After three years, they legitimately came to this body, provided statistics and information in terms of how that program was beneficial to the community, and then we made that policy that, in terms of transitioning and providing that local funding, so that they can continue that program. And to this very day, every quarter or twice a year, they graduate individuals out of the Adult Drug Code Program with a recidivism rate extremely low, even below the national average. Also, another complementary program is the Juvenile Drug Code Program. That was another program that we received federal funds for over three years, a timeframe, and the understanding was that after three years, that should be ample time to be able to get the program up and running, and for you to justify the existence of the program with local funding, if in fact, the local community would like to continue to see those programs exist. And then finally, let me say this much, and the Veterans Treatment Court, last year, received funding. And the funding arrangement, based on information that was provided to me, is a very similar structure. They provided the seed money, they're providing a three-year mechanism so that in fact, those funds can be utilized, get the Veterans Treatment Court up and running, and then the local community ultimately will have to step in and absorb that particular cost. Madam Speaker, from the Adult Drug Court to the Juvenile Drug Court, to the COPS program, to the Veterans Treatment Court, these are all programs that originated and have originated with funding support from their federal granting entity, and then eventually, this community, with the exception of the Veterans Treatment Court, because the timeline has yet to be exhausted, have all transitioned to local funds. So I consider, certainly, this legislation would bring to the attention of not only the Chair of the Appropriations Committee, but members of this body, that if in fact there are time restrictions on the use of these federal funds, then obviously, we need to take into consideration other funding options, whether it be local general fund or other funding options, so that we can continue these programs, if that's a desire of this policymaking body. So I certainly stand and commend the sponsors of this particular legislation, Madam Speaker. It will provide the necessary information, and it would allow we as, or this august body and future members, the opportunity to be able to plan effectively, at least within the foreseeable two or three or four or five years. So thank you very much, and I support this legislation. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. And also, legal counsel and clerks have duly noted to make sure that we make those technical corrections on page two, line one. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the motion? There being none, Senator Blas, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I want to thank my colleagues for the dialogue, as well as for the amendments that actually made for a stronger bill. I just basically want to leave this, you know, with one thing. What really struck me is, if you, in our last budget, on federal grants in aid requiring local match, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, basically, was 29,581,433. That's the requirement. You know, and if it's 50%, that basically comes out to about $15 million, at least, that this body would have to try to figure out if the federal matching, if the federal programs were to expire, were to run out, or just basically disappear. That then, we would have to scurry, come back into this body and look for $15 million to make sure that we've got public health services, because there's no plan right now. And so, that's what this legislation will provide. I want to thank the good Senator from Zonia here with regards to the suggestion of the judiciary. You know, as much as I feel that maybe, yeah, they should be a part of this, in all fairness, I think that the best route to take, so that we can bring them in, so that we can talk to them about this, is hopefully that this bill does pass, it is signed by the governor, and then make the appropriate legislation to amend this to include the judiciary. But this would give us, again, as you stated, give us a tool, the better tool, to understand the workings of the government, how much it really costs to operate the government, and what we're going to need if we were to run this government totally under our budget. So I want to, I'm hoping, you know, for the support of every member of this body. I'm hoping for that support, ma'am, and with that, I'd like to move this to the third reading.
So on the motion, and to send 144-33 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Munia Barnes for Bill 111.
Madam Speaker, may I just move to set that aside? I did receive some information from GPD that they're looking into before they can work the MOU, so I'd like to know if I can just set that aside for a while.
Sure, not a problem. Senator Rodriguez on 145-33.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 145-33 on the third reading. Be allowed to.
And that's as introduced?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Senator. So yes, you may proceed.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, Bill 145, what this does is to, is adds the Bureau of Economic Security Program under the Department of Public Health and Social Services into existing law that allows them to, that allows them to be able to use joint or mutual use contracts. Including this Bureau into the statutory authority to be able to use a joint or mutual use contracts, would allow for the sharing of procurement with existing contracts of other government agencies to achieve economies of scale and volumes of bulk purchasing. Allowing the economic Bureau of Security to participate in the Western State Electronic Benefits Transfer Services contract with Western State's EBT Alliance would allow the program, which is federally funded, to be able to really maximize the amount that it's used to contract for these services. I must state, Madam Speaker, that currently, the Bureau, the Department of Public Health, who receives these federal funds to operate the EBT program, already uses mutual use contracts. They've been using it for several years. However, it has come to the attention of the grantors, federal grantors, and also our local Attorney General's Office, that a statutory provision needs to be included moving forward. And so, this is at the request of the Department. This measure was put together in consultation and guidance by the Attorney General's Office. So I'm hoping my colleagues would support the inclusion of the Bureau of Economic Security, just like we did several years ago, in including the WIC program, the Women, Infants, and Children program, into this authority, into enter into joint or mutual use contracts. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion? Is there anyone, our colleagues, who would like to speak on Bill 145? There being none, then, so on the motion to send 145-33 to the third reading file, no objections, so ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to recess until tomorrow morning at nine.